Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the committee of the whole. Before I do that, I'd like to read something pursuant to the gubernatorial disaster proclamation of the declaration of emergency for the city of Urbana, Illinois related to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the changes to the open meetings public act, public act PA 101, 640. It has been determined that an in-person public meeting is not prudent or safe at this time. Members of the public body will attend remotely using Zoom webinar. Members of the public may attend via Zoom or viewing meetings remotely on Urbana Public Television per Comcast Xfinity on channel six and 1096, I three broadband on channel six, AT&amp;T universe on channel 99, and also streamed on the web, which is livestream.com/urbana. With that, can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meetings from August 16th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from August 16th, 2021.
A second.
Moved by Jay and seconded by Sharice. Are there any corrections? I can't see everybody on the screen here, so. All right, with that, will the clerk please call the roll for the vote of the amendments?
Mr. Quisenberry? Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? All right, the first item is closed session per five ILCS 120 slash two C two for collective bargaining negotiations. And I have a motion to go into closed session.
We move to go into closed session.
Second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
All right, so what you all should do now is you should close your Zoom window, go to your email, and you'll have a new Zoom link to be entered into the closed session for the public. Once the closed session is done, we will return back to this room. All right.
Looks like we only need Charisse. All right, but we do have quorum. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
All motion to come out of closed session.
All right, move by Christopher and seconded by Jaeha. I guess we don't have discussion on this. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, we're back in open session right now. Now is time for public input. If you choose to provide public input, please raise your hand. I think it's star nine if you're on your phone or if it's in the lower left-hand corner of your screen. All right, the first person up is C. Can you please state your name for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, this is Christopher Hansen. Okay, can I go now?
Yes, you may.
All right, I really just wanted to comment on the closed session. You guys were gone for 80 minutes. I understand you were probably discussing the police contract. I'm wondering if each of you would be good enough when you have a chance to comment later, if you could tell the public why you went into closed session. I mean, I understand the stated reason, and I'm not saying you weren't allowed to go into closed session to discuss that issue. I'm just wondering why you actually did it. I can't think of a reason. I mean, we talked about transparency. It's in the Ten Shared Principles twice. I don't think you were discussing any particular police officer by name. I think you were probably discussing the contract in general. And I'm trying to understand why the public couldn't have been allowed to listen to that after talking about it for 80 minutes. Veiled from the public, what are we supposed to learn from that? And what are you going to give us in terms of a discussion when you actually come to the discussion item? All of you voted yes to go into that closed session, and I just can't understand for life with me why you would bother to do that when you could have included the public in what I think a lot of people think is one of the most important discussions of your political terms. So I hope you'll, you don't have to answer me if you don't want, but at least tell your constituents why you thought they shouldn't be allowed to listen into any of that and what needed to be kept secret from the public. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your input. Does anybody else wish to address the committee of the whole at this time?
Arielle, I had one that was emailed to me. Is this an appropriate time to?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so this is from Patrick. I'm going to apologize in advance if I say his name wrong. Comutis. As a resident of Urbana's fourth ward, I am unequivocally opposed to the proposed FOP contract with the city. The Urbana Police Department is a racist and classist institution with a long and despicable history of violence against our community's black ground and poor residents. The nearly half a million dollar increase this represents over the next three years should be spent on programs and institutions that support and nurture.
You're freezing again. Can you read the last sentence?
Sure, I apologize for that. One moment, let me get back to it. The nearly half a million dollar increase this represents over the next three years should be spent on programs and institutions that support and nurture our community members, not one that brutalizes, harasses, and beats them down.
Okay, with that, I don't see any other hands raised.
Read out, and Shonda has a hand up too.
I have an email to read as well. It says, hello councilmember Bishop, I am an Urbana resident living in Ward five. I am writing to ask that the Urbana City Council not enter into a new contract with the Urbana Police Department. As a resident of Urbana, I am disappointed in the move to enter into a new, into a contract that will put more funding towards policing. The UPD has a history of racist violence against black residents in Urbana, as well as a demonstrated tendency to avoid accountability for officers who commit wrongdoing. This difficult year has shown the world that police don't make communities safer. In a time when many are struggling to access basic necessities, the government shouldn't prioritize police for these reasons.
Looks like we only need Charisse. All right, but we do have quorum. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion to come out of closed session.
Second. All right, move by Christopher and seconded by Jaya. I guess we don't have discussion on this. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, we're back in open session right now. Now is time for public input. If you choose to provide public input, please raise your hand. I think it's star nine if you're on your phone, or if it's in the lower left-hand corner of your screen. All right, the first person up is C. Can you please state your name for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, this is Christopher Hansen. Okay, can I go now?
Yes, you may.
All right, I really just wanted to comment on the closed session. You guys were gone for eighty minutes. I understand you were probably discussing the police contract. I'm wondering if each of you would be good enough when you have a chance to comment later, if you could tell the public why you went into closed session. I mean, I understand the stated reason, and I'm not saying you weren't allowed to go into closed session to discuss that issue. I'm just wondering why you actually did it. I just, I can't think of a reason. I mean, we talked about transparency. It's in the Ten Shared Principles twice. I don't think you were discussing any particular police officer by name. I think you were probably discussing the contract in general. And I'm trying to understand why the public couldn't have been allowed to listen to that after talking about it for eighty minutes. Veiled from the public, what, what, what are we supposed to learn from that? And what are you going to give us in terms of a discussion when you actually come to the discussion item? All of you voted yes to go into that closed session, and I, I just can't understand for life with me why you would, you would bother to do that when you could have included the public in what I think a lot of people think is one of the most important discussions of your political terms. So I hope you'll, you don't have to answer me if you don't want, but at least tell your constituents why you thought they shouldn't be allowed to listen into any of that and what needed to be kept secret from the public. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your input. Does anybody else wish to address the committee of the whole at this time?
There, Alice, I had one that was emailed to me. Is this an appropriate time to?
Yes, go ahead. That's.
All right, so this is from Patrick. I'm going to apologize in advance if I say his name wrong, Comutis. As a resident of Urbana's ward, fourth ward, I am unequivocally, unequivocally opposed to the proposed FOP contract with the city. The Urbana Police Department is a racist and classist institution with a long and despicable history of violence against our community's black ground and poor residents. The nearly half a million dollar increase this represents over the next three years should be spent on programs and institutions that support and nurture.
One step. You're freezing again. Can you read the last sentence?
Sure, I apologize for that. One moment, let me get back to it. The nearly half a million dollar increase this represents over the next three years should be spent on programs and institutions that support and nurture our community members, not one that brutalizes, harasses, and beats them down.
Okay, with that, I don't see any other hands raised.
Read out, and there's, Chandra has a hand up too.
I have it, I have an email to read as well.
Okay.
It says, hello, councilmember Bishop, I am an Urbana resident living in Ward Five. I am writing to ask that the Urbana City Council not enter into a new contract with the Urbana Police Department. As a, as a resident of Urbana, I am disappointed in the move to enter into a new, into a contract that will put more funding towards policing. The UPD has a history of racist violence against black residents in Urbana, as well as a demonstrated tendency to avoid accountability for officers who commit wrongdoing. This difficult year has shown the world that police don't make communities safer. In a time when we, when many are struggling to access basic necessities, the government shouldn't prioritize police. For these reasons, I do not support the contract with UPD. Thank you, best, Sana Sabula. I'm sorry if I messed that name up.
Grace, did you have another one? One thing that I, I think that we probably should do with these, although they haven't gone over, is there is that four-minute limit. So Jason, would you mind putting up the clock while Grace reads her email? Did you have an email, Grace?
Yes.
That was asked to be put in public, okay.
Yes, I believe this one hasn't been read yet. I've been trying to listen and compare. This is from Logan Middleton. I'm writing to demand that members of the Urbana City Council not approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement with the Urbana Police Department. The CBA agreement stands to provide raises and a higher pay to Urbana cops. It also proposes less oversight and less accountability for UPD officers. Given that everyday people are still struggling on account of the pandemic, and given the numerous incidents of violence committed by the UPD, why spend more on policing instead of providing for the material well-being of Urbana residents? Many of you really want these kinds of changes, or, or in your community. This is a pivotal moment since this new contract lasts three years. Going to approve the CBA demonstrates that you stand with racist police terror, that your commitments are thoroughly anti-black, and that you are choosing to willfully ignore the testimony that has been shared with you by community members in these meetings since summer twenty twenty and before. Reject this contract now.
Okay, all right. With that.
We have some hands up from the.
That's what I was just going to look. Thank you. Alan Max Axelrod. Axelrod, sorry.
Oh, wow, going first, okay. Thank you, good evening, Alan Max Axelrod, City of Urbana resident. I just wanted to say that what we are going to see tonight is a reflection of the campaign promises made, and so I'm going to go over a few notable campaign promises. The following have promised to reimagine policing. Christopher Evans, Chandra Bishop, Diane Marlin. The following have pledged to, in a very particular definition, that prioritizes community resources in programs over expanding policing to defund the police, including Jai Colacetti and Grace Wilkins. I hope that the vote that is taken tonight reflects integrity upon those promises. And what I also want to say is that I did look at some of the disciplinary items in the CBA, if it is the same version that I have seen. The only thing that I was particularly a fan of was the discontinuation of expiring disciplinary records, that is to say that people will not be taken unawares by police that have a problematic disciplinary record simply because they have timed out some of their past conduct. That remains relevant. So I hope that that is something that stays in the contract as negotiations continue, and I hope that the campaign promises made were made in good faith. Have a good night.
Thank you for your input. All right, I'm scrolling to see if I see any more hands. I do not. Up, all right, one, two more hands came up. Lance Pittman, and I didn't start writing down what time we did this. Lance Pittman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I also want to say that I don't support the approval of this FOP contract. I don't think anyone's seen the full contract, and as you know, you've been in closed session for over an hour, and the public doesn't know what has been talked about. I, I just don't think it's time to approve this when we don't even know what the use-of-force policy is going to be yet and how that interacts with the FOP contract. It seems like we need to hear from the public, and, and, you know, the, the use-of-force contract was revised once in response to the beating of a young black woman last summer. And the initial revision was so bad that it went back into another revision, and then based on the comments two weeks ago at city council, it seemed like even the revised, revised version of the use-of-force policy was not going to cut it, at least with the public. And now it seems like you want to approve an FOP contract, which has to do with how officers can be disciplined and how that works. And it, it doesn't make any sense to me that you would approve a, a union contract before even knowing what the use-of-force policy is going to look like. I would like to call back to, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Grace's question, where she asked, would the new, new use-of-force policy guidelines have even changed anything about the findings of the arrest from last summer? And the city and police chief were unwilling to answer. They cited that council had told them not to answer, but I don't see why there's any reason why they couldn't, and why it's not in the public interest, frankly, to know. The entire reason that we are revising the use-of-force policy is in part because of George Floyd, in part because of the arrest last summer, where a young woman was beaten by Urbana Police Department. And if we can't even answer basic questions about whether that arrest could have gone differently, or whether the discipline could have gone differently, I, I don't even know why we're talking about a fraternal order of police contract at this point, frankly. Yeah, thanks, that's all I have.
All right, thank you for your input. The next person is Allison Caesar. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Um, you did not, it's Kassar.
Kassar, sorry about that.
Uh, I just wanted to chime in to support everything that's been said by members of the public so far today, including the two emails that were read aloud. I also agree that the lack, absolute lack of transparency that's accompanied this deliberation over the new FOP contract should suggest that that it should be held as a, as a failure to abide by new transparency promises and guidelines, and that a significant input from the public is needed, including, including a look at the revised use-of-force policy before this discussion goes forward. Thank you for your time. I also would like to, sorry, agree with other, other citizens who have spoken about the hour-plus spent in closed-door deliberation that, over, over an issue that very strongly affects the public. And I'd like to ask that council members perhaps explain the reasoning behind that and the reason to vote for closed session. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. The last person is Chelsea Birchmeyer.
Hi, yeah, my name is Chelsea Birchmeyer. I'm a member of the Graduate Employees Organization, GEO, the labor union for graduate workers on campus. So I just wanted to also add my input. I think it would be good to have more time for public in, input on the contract before approving the contract, like maybe having a listening session or something like that, and just giving people time to actually learn more about what's in the contract, and maybe having a presentation or something like that about it. I know some city council members attended a teach-in last year that was hosted by GEO and Defund UIPD about police unions. So I was really glad to see that in the proposal, some of what was discussed there and in future meetings was, was brought into the proposal with changing the practice of removing disciplinary notices. But there are also some changes that I think people would like to see that aren't implemented in the contract currently, so there's still the seniority provisions that make it so that senior officers who might be responsible for misconduct are not being impacted by layoffs, regardless of their history of misconduct. I, I'm not sure, since I haven't seen the full contract, but I think there is, might still be a hundred twenty hours of paid leave for police union conferences. And also, in the last contract, there were more changes that needed to be made for the CPRB to have real power, and I did see some of those changes, but there are still more that I think should be made. And then there's also the issues a couple of people have brought up about the increase in spending on police for things like clothing allowances and also the wage increases that are increasing the funding going to the police when that money could be reallocated in other areas like mental health resources. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll close public input. Do we have any presentations? There weren't any listed. Diane or Carol, do you have any? No, no presentations. All right, any staff reports this evening? No. Oh, Diane?
Just one, I wanted to let the public know that there will be a 9/11 memorial ceremony at West Side Park in Champaign beginning at eight forty-six AM. And this will be a joint ceremony between Urbana Fire and Champaign Fire Departments. That'll begin at eight forty-six AM, Saturday morning.
All right, thank you. All right, the first resolution up on the docket is Resolution Number 2021-09040R, Resolution Approving a Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Seventy for a term of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Elizabeth, are you going to be presenting on this, or is Ben going to start presenting?
Ben will. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council, for, for having me tonight. I, I am happy to report to the council tonight that we have reached a voluntary contract settlement with the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council. By way of background, both for council as well as for members of the public who are understandably very interested in this topic, I just wanted to make sure to explain the legal framework that police negotiations take place in, in the state of Illinois. We are regulated by the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act. That's a law that was passed by the Illinois Legislature in 1984. It was amended to include police and firefighters in 1986. And when the legislature added police and firefighters to the Public Labor Relations Act for very obvious reasons, they did not want to allow police officers and firefighters to have the right to go on strike, because that would present a very present and imminent threat to public safety if police officers and firefighters were to go on strike, which used to happen back in the seventies in Pre-Labor Act. When our legislature made that amendment to add police and fire, they had a variety of alternatives. They could have, like happens in the federal sector, under both Democratic and Republican administrations alike, there is no impasse resolution mechanism whatsoever. Instead, federal employees have what we call meet-and-confer rights, where they can sit down, and for, to kind of shorthand it, we say they can ask nicely, and the federal government can say yes or no to those polite requests. That is not the direction that the Illinois State Legislature decided to take. Instead, the Illinois State Legislature decided to impose upon municipalities binding interest arbitration to resolve any contract disputes. Now, I, I want to briefly touch on this. I'll point out, for the public and for the council as well, that there is a presentation available, I believe it's available on the city's website, that describes the bargaining process in, in the public sector in greater detail. It's about an hour-long discussion. But to briefly touch on what binding interest arbitration means for police officers and firefighters is when we reach a, a bargaining impasse that the parties cannot come to voluntary terms on their contract, we have to submit that impasse to a third-party interest arbitrator. That interest arbitrator is not elected by the people of the city of Urbana. He does not live in your city. In some occasions, he does not even live in our state, and he comes to the city of Urbana, and here's arguments from the parties under the Labor Act as to which party's proposal is most reasonable and appropriate, and awards that final offer. In the process of doing that, the arbitrators look to what's called Section 14H of the Labor Act, which dictates the factors that the arbitrator is supposed to consider when rendering his decision. On economic items, wages, for example, health insurance, the arbitrator is obligated to award one party's proposal or the other. He is not allowed to split the baby. On non-economic items such as rules, regulations, call-off policies, layoff language, the arbitrator on those non-economic items does have the ability to craft his or her own language if the arbitrator so chooses. As a practical matter, very few arbitrators want to craft their own language, even on non-economic items, because they're afraid of getting it wrong. They're afraid of not knowing enough about the intricacies of these particular parties as to what will work and will not work. So even though they have that right, they very rarely exercise that right for that reason. Very important to understand, in the context of this police contract, a, a couple of things about police discipline, and to back up, by, by way of, of explanation for the members of the public who don't know me. I'm a management-side labor attorney. I work for a law firm called Clark Baird Smith. We solely represent management in collective bargaining and employment matters. That is, that's what we do day in and day out. We've handled probably more interest arbitration cases than any other law firm in the state of Illinois, so we know what the realities are in that process. One of the realities that, that we deal with is, first of all, Section Eight of the Labor Act. Section Eight of the Labor Act mandates that all disciplinary disputes, and frankly, all contract disputes, have to be resolved using grievance arbitration, which means that when we discipline a police officer, a firefighter, a public works employee that's covered by a union contract, by law, imposed upon the city by, by the state legislature, the union has the right to take that grievance to binding arbitration to decide whether that employee, be it a police officer, a firefighter, a, a public works employee, or, or anything in between, whether that discipline was for just cause. And that just cause analysis entails two parts. First of all, did the employer prove that the employee engaged in misconduct? And second of all, does the punishment fit the crime? I will candidly tell you that I disagree a lot of times with neutral arbitrators on the second prong of that analysis in terms of whether the punishment fits the crime. But that is the mechanism that the state legislature has set up for us, and it's one that we cannot insist on changing unilaterally. It's one that would be a permissive subject of bargaining to change from that grievance arbitration mechanism to resolve both grievance, uh, discipline and contract interpretation disputes. So that's just the lay of the land in terms of the reality that we're forced to deal with. I have been an advocate for making changes to that via the state legislature, but until those changes happen, in terms of the bargaining that we do in the city of Urbana, we have to deal with in the law that's been created for the city. So again, I encourage anybody who's interested in learning more about that process to please go online and, and take a look at that video. Having said that, and for further information on the contract that's actually in front of council tonight, as is referenced in the council memo, the wages that are in this contract are a favorable wage settlement for the city of Urbana. The wage increase effective 2020 is 1.5%. The wage increase for 2021 is 2%, and 2022 is 2.5%. Compare that to what we see right now. One of the factors that interest arbitrators are required to consider under the factors in Section 14 of the Act is the cost of living as measured by the CPIU. The most recent report has the twelve-month change in the CPIU at 5.4%. So in each and every year of the contract, the settlement, the, the wage settlement is less than half of that CPIU measurement. In addition, arbitrators are required to look at what's called external comparability, which is what the wage increases in comparable jurisdictions are. What we see in terms of, of, of standard contract settlement these days is 2.5%. So we're beating that wage settlement in two out of the three years of the contract. So overall, economically, it's a fair contract settlement that, that recognizes the financial situation of the city and of the pandemic. I do want to comment briefly on the observation that's been made that this does add ostensibly $450,000 in expenses to the contract. It's important to recognize that that is a cumulative expense over three years of the contract. It's not $450,000 once and twice and three times. Rather, it builds over time. So if I give you an extra $1 this year, and next year I give you an extra $1 more than I gave you this year, I gave you $1 this year, and $2 next year is $3 more total. So by the third year, that would be. So by the third year, that would be six dollars more total. So it builds upon itself in terms of that costing analysis. Very important to the questions about the city's overall budget. I want to emphasize, this contract does not interfere with the city council's ability to make budgetary decisions in terms of future budgets. What this does is simply say what you are going to pay the police officers who are on your payroll, what their salary is going to be. And say what you will about the need for police reform, which again, I understand. Employees still deserve to be paid. And I think that, just as an observation, take it or leave it as you will. It is very dangerous to engage in a race to the bottom in terms of your compensation for your police officers. If you pay less, you're not going to attract people to your department who are able to make good, sound decisions. You want people who are able to make good, sound, split-second decisions. And if you are settling for lesser candidates because you're not drawing candidates to your department, because you're not paying them enough. That is probably not going to help achieve the city's long-term objectives. In terms of what the city decides in terms of its future budget. There is nothing in this contract that is what we can call a minimum staffing obligation or a minimum manning obligation. Which is something that in fire contracts is a mandatory subject of bargaining, but in police, we don't have to talk about it. So when you consider your budget, it is still the council's discretion to decide how many sworn police officers you want. What ranks you want those sworn police officers to hold. How many civilians you want to employ in the police department, et cetera. There's nothing in this contract that ties your hands in terms of making those public policy decisions in the future. This is simply, what are we going to pay the employees that we do currently employ? I want to talk about a couple of the non-wage provisions in the contract and then come back to a couple of the other comments that I heard in public session. In terms of the non-wage provisions, as was observed in public session. Very happy to report to Council that we were successful in eliminating the provision in the contract that required certain disciplinary events to be expunged from employee personnel files. That expungement provision is now gone and discipline, once it is issued, remains in employee personnel files in perpetuity. It does not disappear. In terms of relying on old discipline for progressive discipline to build upon it. Anything that is a written warning or less. Instead of the old contract that said that could only be relied upon for either six, twelve or twenty-four months. That can now be relied upon for five years. And in terms of any sort of more severe discipline, suspensions or demotions or anything of that like, that's beyond the level of a written reprimand. That can be used in perpetuity for progressive discipline without any caps, subject only to the just cause requirements of the contract. Which are, again, built into state law. The contract also has a provision. There's language in there that already addresses the civilian police review board, the CPRB process. That CPRB language previously said that all complaints against an officer have to be supported by a sworn affidavit. That requirement has been removed from the contract. There was also an admonition in the contract that admonished people that if they submitted a false affidavit or a false complaint. That they could be criminally prosecuted for that. That admonition has also been removed from the contract. So it's no longer there as a deterrent to people coming forward and filing concerns at the CPRB. You know, I want to emphasize that certainly if we had the ability to write the contract without engaging in collective bargaining. Then the contract would be far more heavy towards the idea of management rights and management prerogative. But in the realities of collective bargaining, overall, this is a very fair contract. And one that I feel strongly is better than we could do in interest arbitration. And it is one that I, as the representative of the city's bargaining team, recommend that the council move forward with ratification. To address a couple of points that were raised in public comment. There was a very fair discussion about use of force policies. I want to emphasize, that is something as a management advocate that I would not recommend we bring to the bargaining table. As a collectively bargained issue. Rather, that is an issue of management prerogative. It is up to the city of Urbana to decide as a matter of policy. When force is appropriate to use and how much force should be used. And that is not something that I want the union to be bargaining with us over. And if you look at the management rights clause in the contract, I believe it's Section three point one. Maybe it's five point one, I can't read my own handwriting. The management rights clause gives the city the right to issue reasonable rules and regulations. And issues like that involving how the city chooses to interact with the public is something that is a management prerogative. So there's nothing about this collective bargaining agreement that forecloses by any means. An ongoing discussion as a council and as a community as to how you want to grapple with those very difficult issues. There was a discussion about seniority and how the seniority provisions in the contract. Essentially trump if the city ever finds itself in a layoff situation. That is, again, an area that is dictated to us by state law. In the city of Urbana, it's found in the Civil Service Commission. In other communities, it's found in what's called the Border Fire and Police Commissioners Act. That law specifically mandates that for both police and fire layoffs must be by seniority by rank. It's something that, again, as a management advocate, I think knowledge, skill and ability are far more important. I don't think that the ability to survive for another year without having gotten fired should be the measuring stick. In terms of whether somebody is laid off or not, if you ever face that difficult decision. But that is just the way the law has been created by the state legislature and it's a requirement that we are obligated to fulfill. So with that, I tried to touch on the contract and some of the concepts that were brought forward in public comment. Like I said, the bargaining process is an imperfect process. By nature, it involves compromise. And at the end of the day, it's my job to advise the city. What does this voluntary contract settlement look like versus how we would fare if we were in interest arbitration? And I do believe that this outcome is the best one for the city and I do recommend ratification.
Mary Alice, I think you tried to talk, but you were muted.
Thank you. Elizabeth, is there anything you want to add?
No, I think Ben did a very good job of summarizing it.
All right, questions for Ben or Elizabeth right now? All right, with no questions, I entertain a motion.
We have a question maybe?
Oh, sorry, Sharice.
Let Grace go. Go ahead, Grace.
Oh, I was just pointing out your hand. You go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. I just wanted to say, I would like to move for Resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero nine dash zero four zero R. A resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Seventy. Term of July one twenty twenty through June thirty twenty twenty three. Be moved to City Council with no recommendation at this time because I think we need more discussion on the subject and maybe more input from the public. So with no recommendation, I'd like to move, that it be. And for the purpose of discussion right now.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second and by Jaya. So moved by Sharice, second and by Jaya, discussion. Chris?
So just to be clear, this motion is to move this resolution for more discussion, correct?
This motion is to move this to City Council with no recommendation.
And where at this future City Council meeting, we're going to discuss it some more, right?
You have an opportunity to discuss it some more. You have an opportunity right now to discuss it. You have an opportunity to discuss it next week, if it moves forward. All right, was there anybody else? James?
Yeah, I want to thank Ben and the team for their work on this and for their, Ben, for your very clear. Analysis and response to our questions in the closed session. It's important for, in terms of a contract. That a public body be able to discuss those terms and ask questions about them in a closed session. That is why the. Open Meetings Act creates that opportunity for us to do that. It is, it is where we test things. We ask questions, some of which are provided by our constituents, some of which are developed by us. I know I appreciated a discussion about the limitations this might put on transparency for reporting and such. And Ben even went outside of his normal area of expertise to talk to us about traffic stops and the governance of that via different. Legislation and how that might impact reporting we might want to do to continue grappling with that question. I support moving this on to Council and, again, appreciate your work. Thanks.
All right, other discussion. Grace?
Want to say that with this, it's a tough and frustrating situation to be in trying to work within the legal allowances of all the state and federal laws. And trying to avoid a worse outcome with interest arbitration. I agree that we need more input from the public and Council and that that would have been great. I hope and hope that the plan is that there will be more input in the next contract, which will be in two years since it's already one year into it. So we, I do hope and plan to see that happening. And working on other avenues to address community safety and police accountability. Like revisiting the CPRB ordinance and role in the city and policing. The community safety evaluation that we plan on doing, more community supports and other creative solutions. I think that voting for this immediate contract is choosing the best of only two immediate options that we have of either. Agree as is or go to interest arbitration and risk a likely worse outcome for the city's sake. So I, I think that, yeah, choosing this doesn't mean that I don't support alternatives or improving policing. I just don't see that as being an option in this one vote. I appreciate that we did get some positive outcomes, like the disciplinary record being longer, not having legal retaliation for complaints that may turn out to be unfounded. And there are things that I would change and I would like more public input. But unfortunately, that doesn't seem to be the situation that we're in at this time. And something that I do hope that will be very different in the next round of contract negotiations to have more input from the get-go. I understand the importance of kind of keeping our hand or the confidentiality of having an advantage with bargaining. And I think that we can get more general input from the public before the negotiations start. And that's all.
Chris?
Yeah. A little frustrated with the process, but I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'm not against the police. We need them for some things. We need to analyze as a, as a community. What we're going to do with the police and what we want them to do in the long run. I don't really have any problem with paying them well. Providing medical and dental benefits. I have no problem with giving them a pension for the work they do. What the public and I want is transparency and accountability. So that we can quality control integrity, so that there is legitimacy. And people in the community will buy in that when a Urbana police officer comes to your residence, he is not there to hurt you. He is there to help you and he is going to abide by the law. And he is going to do the very best he can to resolve things peaceably. To do that, we need transparency. And I am very disappointed with this contract. That, and disappointed, you know, years ago for the way the civilian police review board was written. It was allowed to be controlled by the FOP and that is why it is so weak and so ineffective at really giving oversight. I think we, you know, in order to trust our police department and make it the best it can be. It needs oversight by the public so that everything the police do is in the sunshine and in the light of day and in public scrutiny. So that is what I have tried to get into this contract. The process did not allow me until the last very minute to do so. And as you can see, that the state legislators decades ago have rigged the game. Who knew about interest arbitration? Who knew about, I mean, who knows until the Matt Rush case a few years ago? That there were these floating arbitrators that were going to decide things that the police chief couldn't, couldn't fire an officer. So, you know, we got a lot of work to do. The public needs to stay engaged with your state legislator, with us, with, you know, just in general, you know, deciding this as a community. So those are my comments. Thanks.
All right, any other comments? Chris, would you take the chair for a moment?
Yes, I will. I recognize Mary Alice.
So a couple of comments from the public in terms of the FOP contract. I know that Elizabeth Hannon had said that that will be up on the city's website tomorrow. If at all possible, I would also ask that they have the YouTube video posted just right there with the FOP contract. I think it's appropriate that we send this on to City Council with no recommendation. To give the public an opportunity to have access to those resources. So, all right, I can take the chair back.
Okay, I reckon, chair back to Mary Alice.
Thank you, Chris. All right, with Jaya?
I apologize in advance if my internet cuts out again. I just want to, I guess, reinforce the frustration with the process. I know there's a big hope for increased transparency. That is something, since the initial conversation about the, this contract was, has been advocated for. And I really appreciate Ben spending the time to talk about that piece. The arbitration process is something that I think deserves a lot more attention on a statewide basis. And at a local level, what I can say, at least for myself, is I will continue to advocate for transparency and information. So hopefully folks heard parts of that process that were discussed tonight. There will be more resources and please do reach out to us so that we hear from you before next week's vote.
All right, Chandra?
I think that when I heard one of the comments ask about why we took so long in closed session, this is why. We, the process was, was very unclear to us as well. And so we had a lot of questions. For, for Ben and staff about. How this contract reads. And, and I think Ben sort of explained it very well, saying that, you know, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. And unfortunately, we don't have anywhere else to go with this contract right now. But there are, we did also have discussion about changes we'd like to see in the future related around, related around the process of collective bargaining agreements. And so I think that. We're all very frustrated with it and know that we hear you, like I hear you. I understand, I, I read the emails, I've heard the comments. And, and we want to live up to what we, what I ran on specifically, reimagining police. I want to see that happen. But we're, we're limited and under the state law, as Ben has said. So I just hope that, and, and we will be getting things done in other ways and other avenues. It doesn't all have to be within this FOP contract. So I just want to make that clear that, you know, this is not the end or this is not squashing all of everything else we want. And have planned for, for our police department and, and reimagining public safety.
All right, with no, Diane?
Just to let folks.
Just to let folks know, the video that we've been referencing is on the city's homepage now. It's called the Municipal Collective Bargaining Process. And it's a very, very good overview of exactly what legal framework and what overall framework that we have to operate under in collective bargaining. So as a prelude to reading the contract, I suggest anyone who's interested to start with that video because it really does provide a lot of information. We had intended and hoped that it would be available sooner, but it wasn't. So it's up there now and as, again, the contract will be posted tomorrow. And I want to thank all who were involved in negotiating the, the contract, the comments that we received and also to underline, as several other have, others have mentioned, is we can continue to make changes in public safety and policing and how we approach things outside the context of the words in this contract. That's, that's a framework, but we can do a lot, we can do a lot as well. So, and we will continue to do that. We've started with the 10 shared principles, the revision of the use of force. We're about to roll out the co-responder car assist response team, doesn't involve extra expenditure funds. It's a reallocation of current resources, which is what the public has wanted. So a number of things are in the works and will continue to be. But again, thank you all for your efforts in this project.
All right, with that, will the clerk please call the roll? Just as a reminder, this is to move to city council with no recommendation.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
All right, that moves on to city council with no recommendation. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2021-09038, sorry, 38R, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CBDG. Family Service of Champaign County Project Number 2021, CSSP-01. Is Sheila here to present on this?
Yes, I am, Mary Alice.
Do you want to present on both of them at the same time?
Sure, I can.
Okay, well, let me read the second one real quickly. The second one is Resolution Number 2021-09039R, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to the City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement with the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers COVID-19 Assistance.
Okay, Family Services is requesting an extension of time. They had a one-year program that unfortunately was delayed due to staffing shortages at Urbana. So the program didn't launch until February. This was our first grant agreement that allows for a reimbursement for meals served to Urbana residents. So they have to date served 324 meals through June, but only spent $970. So extending the agreement would just allow them this next year to complete the grant agreement, but no additional funds would be allotted. And staff and the CD Commission does recommend that we move this forward to the consent agenda. And the next one, the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, this was brought to council in March. Champaign County Healthcare Consumers serves a clientele that kind of falls in the cracks with other local programs. And so people who go to the hospital but need to, to quarantine safely after they're released, use this program to help, as well as people who don't fit into the township or other CU at home, any of those type of programs, then this allowed them to get assistance and to be safe through the pandemic. Unfortunately, the pandemic has gone on longer than we anticipated. And then also with the closing of CU at home, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers has just had a lot more expenses than they anticipated. There is funding available through the COVID funding. This will tie up the, the end of it. And so we would like to recommend giving them additional funding to finish out this calendar year. This program will be done in December of '21. So does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Sheila. Grace?
Thank you. I think these are two important initiatives. And my question was just a general one. If you could just fill us in a little background on how the Community Development Block Grant Program works, like how's the money from HUD? Are we administering money from HUD? And do people apply for these grants? Just kind of a big picture question.
Sure. The city gets an allocation from HUD each year based on our population size and condition of our housing stock, which is why the census is so important to us to get those numbers right. And so each year, based on that allocation, we complete an annual action plan that outlines the priorities and needs that have been identified by the community and then how we're going to address those. And so the year that the Consolidated Social Service Funding Application for Family Services came about, that was a joint program that we did with township where township put in funding, block grant put in funding, and then the city's general fund put in funding. And there was a core group of people that included township staff and Urbana staff, and then Mary Alice was the council representative on it, that we did an open application, we had scoring criteria, and then made recommendations to council based on that for, to fund these agencies. And so, you know, obviously serving our seniors is a, a high priority and that's where that one came through. The COVID grant application for Champaign County Healthcare Consumers, they approached us needing this funding. We had been in touch with, through the past year and a half with the pandemic, we've been in touch with a lot of the social service agencies and trying not to duplicate services, you know, communicating with the county, the townships that champagne on who was trying to serve what population because most of the people that these agencies serve don't just stop at Wright Street. So we're trying to make sure that we don't have that duplication of services, but yet still serve the Urbana residents that, that need served. And in particular, our homeless population, that's really difficult to, to identify where they live or where they slept the night before. So Champaign County Healthcare Consumers just kind of was that unique niche that nobody else was really able to assist their clients. And so they were trying to do it on their own, but given the demands of their agency, they approached us with, for help. And so we identified it as a need and that met a need in the COVID-19 funding that we were awarded through HUD and we brought it to council for approval. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Sheila? Even though she, Charisse?
I'd like to make a motion if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Um, I'd like to move for Resolution Number 2021-09-038R, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Family Service of Champaign County Project Number 2021-CSSP-01. I'd like for, to move that to a, for approval on a consent agenda for, to city council.
Second.
All right, moved by Charisse and seconded by Jay. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries and it goes on the consent agenda next week. Can I have a motion for the second resolution? Charisse?
I'd like to move for Resolution Number 2021-09-039R, Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement, Champaign County Healthcare Consumers COVID-19 Assistance. I'd like to move that for, for approval for city council next week on a consent agenda.
Second. All right, moved by Charisse and seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. It goes on the consent agenda at the next city council meeting. The next up is ordinance number 2021-08038, an ordinance amending city code chapter two, administration, sections two hyphen forty-two appointments, two hyphen forty-three term, two hyphen seventy appointment, two hyphen ninety-nine civil service system, chapter five with building, fire and flood safety codes, section five hyphen twelve for appointments, and chapter twenty-five vegetation, section twenty-five through forty-eight appointment. It's, it's my understanding that staff would like some direction so that they can craft the appropriate ordinance. And so what I'd like to do is have Elizabeth present the items and then what we'll do is go one by one and take a straw poll so that staff has the appropriate direction to finalize this. So Elizabeth?
Um, sure. So I, so I've roughly taken all of the questions and suggestions, requests for information from the last meeting, and I divided them into two categories. So as council member Wu mentioned, the, the first group is potential amendments to the city code. There's also a second group of items that's just responses to questions and requests for information. So in the first group, one of the, one of the suggestions revolved around the issue of requiring whether officers shall be appointed or may be appointed by the mayor. And so there is some proposed language for section two dash forty-two that would, if you agree, replace the language that is currently in the code amendment. There was also some discussion about whether certain additional positions should be included as appointed. So if you wanted to do that, we would just need direction to include any of those positions in section two dash forty-two. BIOS for appointed staff. There is again some suggested language that could be added to section two dash forty-two. And then there's a potential clarification to language regarding city council access to, to personnel records for the, the appointed employees. So again, some suggested language that, that you could direct us to add to section two dash forty-two. Fifth item goes to the term of appointment. So there is some suggested language that would, that we could replace in section two dash forty-three. And then there is some suggested language for section two ninety-nine to A that we hope would clarify that term appointing authority that, that seemed to cause confusion in the previous discussion because it's used in different ways. It's, it's used in relation to appointed positions, but it's also used in relation to civil service positions.
All right, before we, before we talk about each of these individual ones, I'm going to ask Elizabeth had provided under the second section, questions and requests for information. Is there any need for further clarification on those items? I think there's six items there. Okay, all right. So what we'll do here is we'll start with the first one. And Phyllis, please correct me if I do this wrong, because I've never done a straw poll that goes this long. But the first item that is up for discussion, can we have, okay, Phyllis, can we have a discussion without a motion? That's my first question.
Well, well, wait a minute. Actually. Crazy thing to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Actually, when you put it out on the floor, whether somebody makes a motion on it or not, the very first person that starts to speak on that issue, the item can then go ahead and be discussed. In other words, that person without a second has already started the motion for this item to go forward for discussion.
Okay, so I need a single motion, but not a second, is what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, or if, say for instance, if one of them just decided, you know, start talking about this item, then you can still discuss it without a second or a motion because that person puts it on the floor and they start their discussion.
Okay, I think I understood that. So it sounds to me like we can start with the first one. Does anybody have any questions or anything that they want to add?
The first, the first one be, being about the shall versus may?
Correct.
Okay, so, yeah. So direct staff to replace the proposed language for section two dash forty-two with the following. So we want to say that the following, do we want to say that the following appointed officers shall be appointed by the mayor and, and as opposed to may be appointed by the mayor, Elizabeth? That's what I'm.
That, that is the question on the, on the table. And I know.
That was the suggestion that was made in, in the last committee meeting, and this is the language that we crafted to try and respond to that.
I have a feeling that James is gonna quiz me.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna call back to the discussion, which is the replacement of shall versus may. Was that not to make it more in alignment with state statute that it originates from?
I'd have to look at my notes from the last meeting. I believe it is more consistent.
That's, that was my recollection was that the state statute that defines this, maybe Michelle has the answer to this.
Yeah, may is in the state statute, so there was the parody of language of may, but I think there was some concern perhaps that that would be read as it was in the mayor's discretion whether or not she wanted those positions to have to go through the appointment process. So I think then that was why the question became, well, can we just say shall? And I think the legislator may have made it may in the event that a mayor might not want to fill the position. I don't think they were contemplating that the mayor would fill those positions in a manner other than an appointment, but I think that's kind of how that discussion came about. But I believe may is the language of the statute.
When you, and you might notice, we also included some language about subject to inclusion in the annual budget because when, when we went from may to shall, then we started tossing this around and the question came up, okay, but what if the position's not budgeted? So that's why that's also there.
Grace, I'm sorry, you had your hand up earlier. That was my question about adding the subject to inclusion in the annual budget. That just means that the appointed positions will be budgeted, correct?
Well, what we're trying to say is if for some reason one of those appointments is not budgeted, the mayor is not compelled to appoint someone to a position that is not budgeted, right? So, so shall is a fairly strong language. So we're trying to qualify that by saying at some point in the future, if we decide for whatever reason, we're not going to continue to have one of those positions and we don't include it in the budget, she obviously can't appoint somebody.
Charisse?
I, I guess, I guess when I, when I read shall in any kind of legal way, shall means at, is an absolute legalese. May is not. And you have to qualify the subject to inclusion in the annual budget. And subject to inclusion can also be a problem because that because that could be based on that we don't have the revenue. Or it could be based on that the mayor doesn't require the services of a particular appointment. I don't remember if, I'm not real good with shall myself. That's all. I'd rather have, I'd rather see a shall slash may with that type of qualification saying subject to budget. Yeah.
Did you want to say something?
I don't know if that can happen.
I apologize. Yeah, I would recommend against doing a shall and may. And yeah, shall is a very strong word in legalese. And may is what the statute originally, or what the statute currently reads. And I think that's what we brought forward. I think we were just trying to address any anxieties that might have been raised about whether or not, again, may could be interpreted to mean that the mayor could fill those positions by mechanism other than appointment, which is then how the shall came up. But our concern on our end, as Elizabeth was saying, is then that could be read as compelling the mayor to fill all of those, you know, positions regardless of the financial state of the city or whether or not there was still a need for that position. So I think may was what we had put forth, but we had offered that as an alternative to address any concerns that it might be interpreted as reading that the mayor could bypass the appointment process for those positions.
Grace, did you have another, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I prefer shall, just as they said, to avoid the may meaning, well, maybe they're not appointed. Maybe it's another kind of position. Could it be, could we even say that the following appointed positions or the following positions shall be appointed by the mayor with advice and consent from council? So even more than the appointed officers, but that those positions are appointed positions? Would that help at all?
Elizabeth or Michelle?
So from my perspective, I'm not sure that that changes anything for me.
I was just saying that the position, so say city attorney, that position is appointed even if the mayor didn't appoint an officer. I felt like it took the shall out of the officer in particular that says that the position itself is appointed. And I feel like that kind of avoided that loophole to where if there was a position that was empty, it doesn't change that it's still an appointed position.
I think that potentially has implications related to other sections that are in the code because throughout those positions that are appointed are referred to as officers.
James?
Yeah, and if I recall, I'm gonna agree with Grace, I prefer the shall language. But I think officer was also important for some of the other reasons why I think this had to do with information about the position that the council has access to information, personnel information regarding officers. And so there was a method to using that to refer to all of these positions, if I recall correctly. Is that right, Elizabeth?
Yes, that's correct.
Chris, would you take the chair for a moment?
Taking the chair and recognizing Mary Alswood.
So I agree with Grace and with James. I think that having shall instead of may is appropriate. I understand that the staff's concerns about forcing the mayor to appoint somebody even if we don't have that position live, just as one of the things that happened when I was on city council at the very beginning was we had to go through the code and change some of the terminology for the city administrator because it was referenced incorrectly throughout the whole thing. So I think having the subject to inclusion of the annual budget, which is also something that goes through city council, is it gives that appropriate balance to make sure that we're not forcing people into a role that we have no money to pay them for. So I personally like the proposed language. And those are my comments. Chris, I can take the chair back if it's okay with you.
Mary Alswood now has the chair.
Thank you. All right. Before I call for a straw vote, are there any other discussion questions for this first one? Require these officers to be appointed, shall versus may? I'm just gonna say we'll vote on the shall. You guys can vote it up or down. All right, so, yeah, you can either thumbs up or raise your hand. For all those who want to include shall, raise your hand. All right, so I've got one, two, three, four, five, and then six. And all those who do not want to include shall, raise your hand. One. All right, so the straw poll is six to one for that one. The second item is the inclusion of information technology manager and/or special advisor for integrated strategy development in appointment lists. So I think that the main question here is, should they be on the list or should they not be on the list? Chris?
I think they should not be on the list.
You think they should not be on the list? Okay. Chandra?
I thought the special advisor position was term limited and essentially wasn't going to be a continued position. Am I mistaken?
Correct, it's a limited term, three years total.
My, what I was going to suggest was remove for integrated strategy and just say any special advisor to the mayor. Now, you don't have to, but it would be more generic because if there was a mayor in the future who wanted to have a different label for their special advisor, that any special advisor would have to go through the appointment process. That was going to be my suggestion, but James?
Yeah, I'll agree with Chris on the information technology manager and on with Chandra on the basis that if the special advisor is about this particular position, I don't think we should include what I'd call term of project appointment in this model. But I do like the suggestion that special advisors would be appointed in this model in a generic way.
All right, other discussion. Chandra?
So I have another question. So are we going to poll them separately or together?
I'm gonna, I was gonna poll them separately.
Okay.
Because it seems to me that there's different thoughts on the. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll take a straw poll on, do we include the information technology manager on the list of appointments? Is there any further discussion on that? All right, so with a straw poll, raise your hand if you want the person included. The only one who wants, all right, two, three, four, all right, raise your hand. This is whether or not you want it on the approval, sorry, the appointed list. Okay, so we have one, two, three, four people who want it on the approval list. How many people do not want it on the approval list? One, two, three, all right, so that's four, three. Now let's talk about the special advisor for integrated strategy. I would suggest that we just move for integrated strategy and put a parentheses S unparenthesis for any, for any special advisor. That would be my suggestion. But I'm welcome to, if there's any discussion on that.
Okay, could you, could you repeat that?
Sure. My suggestion is to remove for integrated strategy and to just give the option of special advisor to be plural. So that's open paren, S closed paren at the end of it, which would cover what I would hope would be any future special advisors.
Okay, so you just want to say any special advisors have to be appointed, period?
Yes, correct.
So just, so just delete the whole integrated strategy, whatever.
That is what I'm suggesting, yes.
Okay, and that they have to, and special advisors, just, we just say special advisors, period, need to be appointed?
Yes. All right, so unless there's no other, Diane?
I'd say if you're gonna go that route, it might be better to label that limited term appointees or something like that because some special advisors may be a permanent position, you know, you never know, so. Do we need to keep the special advisor as part of that title, I guess, is my question, Elizabeth?
Right, right. Grace?
I was gonna ask if we wanted to specify too, if it was special advisors to the mayor or just about anything in particular, like I don't know if we have, if that's a common thing to have advisors for different roles or for different projects. So just didn't know if we needed to clarify the type of advisory role.
Well, currently, that's the only position that exists that has a special advisor as part of the title. Of course, I can't, you know, I can't necessarily say what might happen in the future.
Like, might clarify special advisor to the mayor for that limited term kind of language just because I could see, say, we have, you know, a special advisor for a certain project or a certain thing, and that might not be what is intended in this when people are reading it decades down the road if the purpose is for someone who's specifically advising the mayor and council in that way.
So would it be appropriate to say special advisors to the executive branch, executive office?
That's an interesting way of putting it.
Michelle, you have your hand raised, but I never know if it's up or down. It's up right now. I just don't know if it went down before.
I think that Councilperson Wilken's point is well taken. That I do think there should be some clarification because we do hire, you know, you want to make sure that nobody ever confuses a consultant then. If the city hires a consultant to consult on a special project. So I do think you should kind of clarify if the special advisory position is linked to the mayor. You might want to then clarify that somehow.
All right, so before we take a straw poll, we have to decide on what we're actually going to take a straw poll on. So right now, the options are the original, which is special advisor for integrated strategy. That's option one. Option two is special advisor plural. And option three is limited term advisors. Is that correct, Diane?
That would be another way to go, yeah.
And option four would be special advisors for the executive department. Those are the four options. Does anybody want to talk about those options? Grace?
I was gonna say, I think possibly combining the last two of limited term special advisors to the executive department branch.
James?
I think we're making this very complicated for only one thing happening in the last, I don't know how many years. That's what I feel.
Chandra?
I would say just special advisor plural to the executive branch because I feel like that would encompass limited time advisors, like longer term advisors. I think just saying just broadly advisors to the executive.
All right, let's go with Chandra's summary. So special advisors, and we'll just do an up or down straw poll. Special advisors for the executive branch. All right, for those who want to include it in that, in the appointment list and with that language, raise your hand. All right, those who do not want to include it with that language, raise your hand. All right, that's six, one. Elizabeth, do you have that language? All right, the next item is to provide bios for appointed staff and the phrases, when bringing forth appointments to the city council, the mayor shall provide a summary of each appointee's qualifications for the office to which they are proposed to be appointed or reappointed. Any discussion on that? James?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that this, maybe this is covered in number five, but is this the place where we would, I like this language, I'm gonna start my thing, I like this language. But is this the place where we should say that the term should be included or is that covered in five? The duration?
That's covered in five.
Okay, never mind. I'm okay with this language.
All right, Chris?
I would like to add that the bios be posted on the city's website for public inspection.
All right, Grace?
I was just gonna say along the same lines that that is provided to council and the public. I think maybe, I don't know if we have to be specific as the website, but you know, clear that it is provided to council and the public.
Okay, all right. Chandra, did you have your hand up? No, sorry. So I guess I would say that when we have appointments on the agenda, we have, we have all the accompanying documentation. So my question is, I mean, that has to be part of the packet. So I'm wondering if we need that language, Chris? I'm just asking because it is, it should be part of the packet. And if it's not there, we ask for it to be part of the packet and put it up on the website.
Yeah, but Mary also, are we saying that it's only going to be available to the public for the, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday day, and that's it? I mean, I was, I guess in my mind was thinking, you know, it'd be posted a week before, a couple of weeks before.
So you're looking for the timing?
Yeah, I'd like there to be more time for the public to see it, yeah.
Chandra? Oh, you're muted.
So you can add shall provide and then insert a timeframe, two weeks before, you know, when the appointment processes to be voted on or whatever.
All right, does that, Chris, does that address some of your concerns to enter in two weeks? Are there any other discussions on entering A, accepting the language with the addition of two weeks prior? All right, let's do a straw poll on that. For those who are in favor of that suggested language, please raise your hand. All right, I'm not gonna ask the other one because it's all seven, so all seven of us. Well, that should make things easier, Elizabeth, or have it written. Number four, clarify language regarding city council access to appointee records. So the proposed, the proposed language is, upon request, the mayor or their designate shall meet individually with members of the city council for confidential review of records related to a proposed appointee's performance and qualifications, subject to any limitations and or restrictions in all applicable laws. That's the proposed language right there. Discussion. Grace?
I think this is an important one that I prefer including, although it is, you know, it's already in the code in some more vague way. I think it is important to spell it out here because we did run into some issues with that. I'm thinking more about meeting individually. You know, Michelle and I went back and forth on how to word this. And I don't know if individually is, I think is too specific because it could be that maybe, you know, we call for a closed session to review the personnel files if all the council members are interested, or maybe two council members at a time, and that's still okay with Open Meetings Act. But I don't think that we need to limit it to meeting individually. But I think we could maybe change the language to say that the, so upon request, the mayor or their designate shall meet with members of the city council in accordance with Open Meetings Act and other regulations for confidential review of records and then the rest of that.
Michelle, is there any concern with that change?
No, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
All right, Elizabeth, you look like you want to say something.
I'm just not sure it's necessary to say in accordance with the Open Meetings Act because we would never meet not in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, but we can put it in there.
I think we were trying to get around any, any kind of concerns about exactly, we spent a lot of time talking about the logistics of how would we go ahead and do this. So I think that that may be why, you know, that came up as a suggestion.
All right, anything else for the? All right, anything else for discussion? So right now, we have this additional paragraph and Grace has asked for us to remove the word individually and then add in, uh, in accordance with OMA. There's no, oh, Sharice?
So it's, we're just gonna remove the word individually?
Upon request, the mayor or their designate shall meet with members of city council uh, for confidential review of records related to proposed, et cetera, et cetera. And somewhere OMA goes in there. Grace, where does it go in between those?
Well, actually, I'm looking at it now, and the last part of the sentence does say, "Subject to any limitations and or restrictions in all applicable laws." And I think they're thinking more of the confidentiality laws and restrictions. But I think that OMA or other regulations for record access and stuff would also fall under there.
It's any law.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm, you know, not the legal expert here. So I'll defer to people's judgment for the exact wording. But I think that it's important to have it clear in the code that council has access to review of the confidential personnel information. And, um, I think individually is too limiting and unnecessary because it could take various forms down the road.
All right, so it sounds to me like the proposal is language minus individually, but no other language changed. Okay, so straw poll. Oh, sorry, Sharice.
One more. Because you have that "shall" in there again. And, um, would that require every city council person to actually have to meet with?
It says upon request. It says upon request.
Okay.
I, I believe what it does is it requires staff to respond to the request.
Okay. Upon, okay, okay. Now I'm just trying to get Michelle's in order.
Yep, all right, so, um, let's go ahead and do a straw vote. Uh, for people who want to include this, please raise your hand when I include. All right, for those who do not want to include it. So Sharice, I just want to make sure what you voted. Did you want to include it or not include it?
Wanted to.
Okay, so it's seven, zero.
But without the individually.
Without the individual, yes.
Without individually.
Without individual. All right, so that's a seven straw vote. Uh, the next one is require the mayor to specify a term of the appointment. And that proposed language is the terms of office and conditions of employment for appointed salary, sorry, appointed employees of the city shall be established by the mayor. The term of the appointment shall be specified by the mayor at the time each candidate is put forth for appointment or reappointment. However, no term of appointment for any appointee shall exceed the appointing mayor's elected term. Discussion. Grace?
Thank you. I'm starting to, uh, feel very strongly that I think that, that last sentence should be no term of appointment for any appointee shall exceed two years. Or slash and, I don't know which is the most appropriate word there, the appointing mayor's elected term unless otherwise specified. I think that's important to have a midterm vote and review. I think it's a lot of power for council to give up and not be involved in the appointment process for the whole rest of a term. Um, I think that that's a good compromise between one and four years. So I really think that two years should be the limit, not exceeding the current mayor's term. Um, there were some thoughts about having a little flexibility about otherwise specified. If maybe someone was appointed two years and six months remaining of a current term. You know, there could be some leeway for exceptions if, um, you know, the mayor wanted to appoint someone slightly longer or shorter, that that would be up to council to decide. But I do think that the default needs to be two years. I think that once per term at the beginning of the term is too long and not good to make an informed decision when you have new council or mayor.
James?
Yeah, I, I, I think it should be as it's stated here. I think artificially limiting it. Um, I, I'd rather us invest time in developing the relationship with the mayor. Uh, this gives the mayor the power to do the appointment for less than their term. If, if there's council, uh, influence to the mayor that says this is why we think this should be a one-year appointment or a two-year appointment. I, I think there will be many times where it should just be a four-year appointment. And repeating the mistake of every year to every other year is, is not where I'd like to be. I think it's really, I don't, I don't really see, um, that people understand how much of a detriment uh, this kind of what could be perceived as political influence on jobs for leadership in our city could be. And I, that, that's why I'm concerned about it. We, we need to hire people that will commit to our city and we need to commit to them. Telling them they're gonna be subject to a political review every two years, I, I think is a mistake. I'd rather, again, I'd say, let's invest the time in having a relationship with this council and with the mayor so that if there's a reason for a shorter term, we come to the mayor and say, you know, this appointment, we feel more comfortable with the shorter term, and here's the reason why. And, and not artificially limit it in the ordinance.
Jay, did you have your hand up earlier? Or was I not? Okay, I know Chandra.
I see Chandra's up. I don't mind.
Chandra?
Um, well, I, I don't see appointment process as a political thing. I think it's, it would be, oh, um, sort of a job performance review every two years, which I don't think that that's sort of out of the question, um, or something not to be expected. Um, if, and it's, it's just a review done by council instead of like an immediate supervisor. So I'm sort of on board with, um, an ev- a two-year, uh, appointment. Or something no longer than the mayor's term. But if we go to the mayor individually with like, oh, I think that, you know, this position should be, you know, a year and a half, and this position should be three years or whatever. I feel like that would make the process more complicated than just having, you know, appointment is two years. Um, or two years or whatever the mayor chooses, no longer than her four-year term.
All right, Jay?
I like the two-year option partially for the reason that Grace stated of providing some review that is not necessarily on the same cycle as the election. Um, so there is that midterm opportunity. As we all saw this year, for those of us who are new, trying to learn about all of the candidates in a very short period of time is not ideal. And so having that opportunity to review outside of that cycle, I think is, is worth considering. Also think, you know, considering this is a major change that is being asked of our government, the, our form of governance, right? In terms of appointments, going from one year to, you know, the, the length of a mayor's term, that's, that's a very big change. Um, and I, you know, we, I, I hear what folks are saying in terms of, you know, the, the stress that can have on people for, you know, going through that reappointment process. I don't discount that, but I'm also thinking about not just this council and this mayor and building those relationships as best we can, but also thinking about in the long term, dynamics might be different and it might be important to have that opportunity for review between elections, essentially, or when people are seated.
Sharice?
Well, if we're, the way I see it is that the mayor is the executive. And most executives, uh, most executive offices have, um, appointees for their term. Um, and that is not to say that there can't be some kind of evaluation process in between. Or should, I think that, you know, should city council, uh, or if there's a majority of city council that, um, seems to have a problem with that, that appointment, then we can, um, um, lobby the mayor regarding shortening that, that, that person's term. But I think the mayor should be allowed to actually appoint whoever they feel works well in that position for their term. And if we, if, if a city council or if a, uh, several members of a city council seem to have an issue uh, with that person's performance or, um, particular leanings and so on and so forth, we can always lobby the mayor to, um, uh, regarding that person's, um, performance. And of course, it would be something that, that I would think it would be subject to like a majority vote or something like that, uh, lobbying the mayor to, to, um, uh, assess or evaluate or possibly terminate that person's, uh, uh, position and reappoint somebody else. But to do, I kind of feel like James said, going from one year to two years doesn't, um, build much, um, rapport or morale in getting possibly some of the best people that would be able to perform certain duties into the cabinet of the mayor, so to speak. And should, you know, should the council notice, uh, any improprieties and so on and so forth? We can always bring that, not just to the mayor's, um, uh, attention, but also to the public's attention. And the public can lobby the mayor to, to terminate a particular term. But I think, I think that the mayor, the position of a mayor, the position of an executive should always, with certain positions, have the right to, to have a four-year term. And I'm just going, um, you know, I'm going based on what, what I see other executive positions do within government. And they, they, they generally get to a point their, their cabinet, their advisors and their, so on, you know, whatever they need for the terms that they will be in office as well.
All right, I, I don't know.
We really need to think, think about that before we start talking about making it one-year appointment or two-year appointment. Why don't we just start with a four-year appointment? And should there be any issues, we can always lobby the mayor to, uh, whoever that would be, the council. Let me put it that way, make it even more generic. The council could always lobby the mayor to, um, not, not, uh, continue with the services of the person that is, has been appointed, I, I believe. Am I incorrect in thinking that?
All right, I don't know who is next, James or Grace. Um, but Elizabeth, did you want to add anything before we move on to the next person?
Oh, I'm sure Michelle will jump in if, if this is incorrect. But the, the mayor can remove an, an appointed employee, so correct. If you thought one of the appointed employees was not performing their job, the, the appropriate thing to do would be to discuss that with the mayor so she could try to address that with the person and if, if necessary, she could remove that person.
Um, that's because of, a point, yeah, okay, because appointees always serve at the pleasure of the mayor, correct? Or the executive?
Um, I mean, we, those words are not in, in the law that, that I, that I can think of. But, um, it, there's specific process for her to remove somebody when she determines it's not in the city's best interest.
Um, the other thing I would note too is that, um, this doesn't remove council's ability to not appoint a person that the mayor brings forward. If the mayor brings forward a term and there's a determination by council that perhaps this appointee she's proposing shouldn't, for some reason, have the term that the mayor is proposing. There could be a discussion at that time about whether or not, when the appointee is brought forward, this would be the appropriate term for that appointee. So this doesn't mean that the mayor arbitrarily will be, be bringing forth every appointee for the duration of their term. And that can be, you know, um, in individual appointee cases, a matter that could be discussed at that time.
All right, uh, we'll go with James first.
Actually, Grace was next.
All right, Grace?
Cat's chewing my computer. Um, so I, I'll just clarify that. So yes, during someone's appointed term, the mayor can remove them, but there is no action that council can take. So, um, don't, I'm sorry. Cat sabotage. Um, there is no action that the council can take. They can only request that the mayor take an action. So I think this is a huge power for us to give up for any future councils.
You can't give up a power you don't have. We don't have the power either way, if that's what you want to say. We don't have any power. We can always just suggest that that person is not reappointed or that that person, in this case, what you're suggesting is that person will be, um, reviewed, so to speak. But I don't, I don't see a, a change in making a difference. I don't see a difference in making it from one year to two years. You think, you let the, I mean, it, it didn't take anybody but a week to mess up if they're gonna mess up. So, it, you know.
Let Grace finish, Sharice.
I know, I'm just, I just, I was just trying to clarify what I was saying.
Though what I think the difference is there is that under the current system, as it has been for a long time, the council gets input every year to reevaluate and vote on those appointments. And changing it to up to the mayor's term, up to four years, I think is a big power for the council to give away because it's essentially one vote, one input for an entire term and then not revisited unless otherwise specified. I understand the argument saying that, you know, council could just specify and request that the mayor only appoint for two years or three years or however long. Um, but I don't think that works because if you have an issue with someone, you wouldn't know that in the beginning. So if I'm thinking hypothetically, say there was this new appointed mayor who turned out to be, you know, this, uh, tyrannist leader and they appointed all of their friends and cronies to all of these top positions. And there was a new council or maybe even existing council, but a new mayor and all new appointees. There, if there was no legal actions, you know, there was no illegal actions committed that they weren't fired by legal reasons alone that are very, you know, extreme. If it was just running the city to the ground or upsetting the public, you know, repeatedly, that there could be all sorts of issues where the council wouldn't have any say. And in this situation, you know, this mayor wouldn't, you know, care if the council comes and asks for them to have someone reevaluated or appoint someone else. They have no obligation to do that. So I just think that it's a really big power to give away. And I think that two years is a nice compromise between one and up to four years. And I think gives each firm, council member and mayor, a chance to re, um, kind of re, uh, validate why they would have people in that position, rethink about it. It just seems like it's, it's a lot when it's coming in, especially at the start of a term for new council members and mayors. I think that that's just a really interesting situation and to not have any opportunity officially for the council to review or vote again, um, just doesn't seem right to me. I feel very strongly that I think it needs to be limited to two years, not exceeding the mayor's term.
James?
Uh, I want to thank Michelle for bringing up the point that I had in my head but forgot, which was, if we get an appointment that's a term that we don't think is appropriate as council, we, we could, um, push back on that or reject it. Um, I, I do, I am, uh, Chandra, I do hear you. And while I still believe that this should be up to the term of the mayor, um.
You mean Sharice?
No, no, I'm talking to Chandra. Um, the, the thing about, um, reviews, uh, I do think has its point. And I, I would suggest that, um, to address that concern that for appointments that are longer than two years, we have a formal process of a midterm review for those appointments. That is just a, uh, feedback process, uh, that the mayor conducts with council.
Why don't we put it, that language in the thing then?
I, I don't know if that belongs here or if that's a separate thing we need to establish. But I, I do understand the, the idea of getting feedback and I do think that that has its place. But I don't think we should artificially limit the, the term of possible appointments um, to force that. I think we could do that through a different process.
All right, uh, Diane?
Well, speaking as a potentially tyrannist mayor, which I am not, I think the danger of having a tyrannist mayor is far less than the danger of what we are facing now, which is, um, even every, a biannual appointment process is going to be discouraging for, for people to even apply for these jobs. And it'll put them through the same, um, stress and anxiety that they're now experiencing every year. You have to at some point trust your elected.
You have to at some point trust your elected officials, just as the public trusts you to make the right decisions. You have to be able to trust the mayor in this case, in this city, who's the CEO of the city to make the appointments for the term. Of of their elect for their elected term. What makes Urbana so completely different from just about every other city we can find is the fact that there's this annual appointment process. There is not even a biannual appointment process. Other cities trust their elected official to make these appointments and. And that's, that's one thing that makes Urbana is is that we're not just unique or special. We're just an oddball way of doing things which discourages people from even applying for jobs. And it has been demoralizing to the staff the past couple of years. It is not the council's job to do performance evaluations in any formal sense of the word. That's just not the city council's job. We so so we need to. In this case, do our jobs. And this, the way this language has been revised. It does require the mayor to specify the term of the employment. It isn't going to exceed four years. It does give the option of a shorter term, but you have to trust. Your elected officials to make that decision and then take feedback and. And presumably have a relationship where there can be an honest discussion, but to say every two years is putting. Staff in the same position they're in now, which is anxiety producing. And unfair to people at this level. These are at will employees at the top of their field. And you have to trust you just at some point, you've got to trust the process. And get us in line, more in line with other communities around us. I mean, we are competing. We are competing for people at this level. To convince them to come work for Urbana, and this puts us in a terrific competitive disadvantage, more so now than ever. And and I can't, I cannot stress to you what challenges this job market is right now. We've gone three years without a city engineer. You you heard the announcement we're missing or going to be losing the director of community development services will be searching for that position. I mean, we are facing severe competitive. Stresses here. And and to 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 do a two year term is not any better than a one year term, in my opinion. And I am speaking in tyrannist mayor position. I'm speaking as a mayor who is trying to do my job. And trying to provide the most positive. Work environment for the staff that we can.
I I just want to throw out a counterpoint to something that Grace had said in terms of. If if somebody comes in and. You know, the the new city council comes in, the new mayor comes in, they they do their appointments. We have people, fortunately. Elizabeth Hanan is one. Who has been with the city for quite some time. No problems. Lots of people know her work. I don't see any problem with appointing her for four years. I'm just using you as an example, Elizabeth, just because you've been here for a while. So my point is, is that there there are career city employees that if there's no concern. Why wouldn't we let the mayor appoint them for four years? So I've been back and forth on this issue and I I've come to. For me, my decision is is that I I like the language as it is, but. I do recognize that we have, I think we have three different things on the table right now. Correct me if I'm wrong. So the first one we have is the existing language. It's in. Bullet point number five. The second one would limit it to two years. Um, and the third one, and Grace, you might have to help me with this one. Because it gave a little bit of wiggle room with the two years. So do you have a. Phrasing for that?
Yes, um, kind of at the end in point, the last sentence, no term of appointment shall or for any appointee shall exceed. Two years. Or the mayor's, the appointing mayor's elected term. And then there was some talk about having some wiggle room unless otherwise specified. Again, if it maybe was. You know, a year, two years and a month remaining in the term that that could be extended because that would make sense. Or if there were positions that you, you know, the mayor or council felt strongly does need to be longer or shorter that. That would there is allowance for that, but I think that the default of two years is better than four years for me. And on general discussion points, too, I see this as accountability. And that we have a responsibility to the public to have input on who are the leaders and policymakers of their city. Since these are apparently policy making decisions on their own department level. And they aren't elected by the public. And if these are policy making positions, I do think it's important to have. A public input through council and through that review process. I, you know, that was a hypothetical of a tyrannist mayor. People can take it as they will if they identify with that, but that was a hypothetical in the future, looking down the road. If it's another 50 years before this code is changed, I'm trying to think of all the possible scenarios. And that, you know, that that could be a scenario. There could be not as good of a relationship with council and the mayor and the public. And I think it's just a lot to give up and trust in that one leader of the city. Because under that thing, if we should just trust the executive leadership, why would we even have council input? Why even have a city council? If we just trust the one leader of the city, why even involve the council and the public at all? So I think that this is an important part about how our government's set up. We are a mayoral alderman at government, so we're different from the cities around us. I understand that it's still even different, but I think that I think we are special and we can be special in Urbana. And I noticed that it's different, but I'm okay with that.
Okay, so Grace, the only thing is, is I'm I'm still a little confused on the phrasing right now. It says. However, no term of appointment for any appointee shall exceed. Two years. Or. The appointing mayor's elected term, or what's the other wiggle room? Unless the third or is what I'm looking for.
Third order that was brought up, which. I'm fine without, but it would give more wiggle room would be or unless otherwise specified.
Okay, all right, okay, so, okay, so we have. Okay, I understand that. Chris, did you want to say something?
Yeah. You know, the public wants us to do oversight on these department positions.
Oh, please.
And. I wonder if there's a, maybe this is too much stress, Diane, I mean, tell me, but. Grace would have compromised be. That city council can recall a department, an appointed position at any time during the mayor's term. Is that or is that too stressful?
Uh, Diane?
I I cannot begin to tell you what trouble that would cause. I you know, you don't want to do that. And and as far as accountability, there's accountability, and then there's just crippling. You've got to be able to separate the two. You're you're accountable to the public. You're an elected official. I'm an elected official. You know, there's the accountability. But you're also running. We have an organization with 250 employees. We are running a city here. And and for. For. A person needs one boss and not. Well, I won't even go there. We, we are a mayoral aldermanic form of government. The cities with our form of government have four year appointments. They don't have year by year. Cities with city manager forms of government, they well, they don't do, all the people are hired by the manager. But but we are an outlier and it's not healthy. It's not healthy for us as an organization. It's not healthy for the employees. If you really want to improve government, what 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 you should do. Is put an item on the ballot and pass a referendum to have staggered elections so that not all elected officials in the city of Urbana. Are up at the same time. That's the other thing. We're completely an outlier in that regard. It's a whole other topic of conversation. But in that way, you don't have a whole new council coming in at the same time with a new mayor potentially. But but as far as trying to provide, you know, you can have accountability. Every single week, there's accountability. It's just. To do, but to get into the weeds like this as a council. Into the in into the. I you know, I I'm not saying this is articulately as I should, but I just can't tell you. How important it is to have a four year term.
Okay, all right, I think I have two options for everybody. Okay, the first option is. As written. The second option is. As written, except the last sentence would say. However, no term of appointment for any appointee shall exceed two years. Or exceed the appointing mayor's elected term. Unless otherwise specified. And Chandra, did I, is that okay? Can I use that? Or do you want me to separate out the just two years?
No, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so we're going to do an up or down straw poll. On whether or not you want to have the. What is proposed language? So that's just right there on written on paper. All right, so all the people who want. Sharice, I'm gonna have to, you're either gonna have to put your hand up or you're gonna have to turn on your video because I've been doing this via. Video. Okay, so if you want to keep. Uh, the proposed language and number five, raise your hand. All right, if you don't want to keep the language in number five, raise your hand. All right, that is three, four. If you.
Right by. Oh, by not keeping that you mean the new language, right?
We're going to go to the new language now.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just doing up or down on both of them, just so it's clear. Okay, so all those people who want the new language, which is two years or exceeds unless otherwise specified, would be at the end. All those in favor of having that included in the next one? One, two, three, four, all those not in favor? All right, so the second piece with the two years and the two caveats there is what should be included in the next iteration? All right, it is 10:22. We have.
Have a question.
Yes.
If if we go to that two year. Model. If that's where we're ending up. I would, I would hope that we would think about. The fact that we're doing this one year in. So that we don't end up doing appointments for two years and then have to do appointments for one year. At the for the fourth year of our terms. So I don't know if that fits into your grace, if that fits into your otherwise specified, but. I I I think that would be a mistake as well.
Grace.
Thanks. Um, I agree. I think that it would make sense to. Move the, you know, the people who we just reappointed a few months ago. Into this new setting so that their appointment would be for two years, so that midterm, we make another round of appointments for the remaining two years of the term.
But it's, we only are in term for four years. So what I think James is saying is that. The next time that comes around, it would be a two year appointment, and then they'd also have to go up for another vote. And I think what he's proposing is that it's three years because the unless otherwise specified. Would would cover that. James, is that correct?
That's what I was suggesting, but if if what I'm hearing from Grace is that we would just extend. All current appointment terms through. The end of the second year.
That would be a one year.
No, I I'm not talking about a new a reappointment. I'm talking about. An extension. Where we would just blanket do that. And then. In the second year, we would, we would have a an appointment for another two years. Is that what you were thinking, Grace?
Um, I think that would make more sense just to keep on the schedule of appointments, but I'm not sure how it works out legally. My understanding of the plan was that if we had made it to up to four years of the mayor's term. That we would have transitioned all the people we already appointed into that system. Is that correct? Or would we otherwise have? Reevaluated in a year since we just appointed people for one year. So my understanding was that we were changing the people who were already appointed to the new code. Regardless. So if that is the case, I think that would make sense, but I'm not sure what the legal obligation is since we appointed them for one year.
All right, before Elizabeth, before we have you answer, can I have an extension for the meeting until 10:45? Can somebody give me a, all right. Second. All right, moved by James and seconded by Shandra with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
All right, sorry. Thank you, Elizabeth, for yours.
So so I was just gonna try and clarify any again, Michelle will jump in if I get this wrong, but. I I'm confident that passing this ordinance doesn't extend anybody's term, right? It just makes it possible for people to be reappointed. With different conditions attached to that process. So i- in order for all all of the appointees who are currently appointed through June 30, 2022. To have a longer term, they they do have to be reappointed because. That that's how it happens.
I'd say in that case, then. You know, we could reevaluate when the time comes, but I do think that that would be one of the instances where it would. Make sense to have the otherwise specified if it was three years remaining of the mayor's term, and that would be something to be. You know, considered at that time. But I do think that would make sense as one of those. Exceptions. Potentially.
Okay, all right. Staff, do you, oh, Chandra, do you want to say something?
I mean, could we just put into the ordinance or something that we are extending the one year terms to two years? For the people we've already just appointed? And just.
I would say that that might not be the right place to do that, because.
Or wherever.
Yeah, that would be codifying it.
Can we get some legal advice on that?
I I would suggest that perhaps another time you take up a question from the mayor on a motion to extend the appointment of these employees. So they would continue to have this term. The mayor could move that you consider an extension of the term or reconsider extending the term. But we don't want to take away, you know, the security of the term through June 30th, so I I would propose that maybe you consider doing it that way.
All right. Okay, let's go on to number six. Maybe this one will be easier. Clarifying, sorry, clarify differing uses of the term appointing authority, particularly with respect to civil service versus appointment of staffs. So the proposed language is. The mayor or their designee as appointing authority for civil service. Shall notify the commission of the fact. And the commission shall certify to the appointing authority. A pool of candidates consisting of the names and addresses of all available candidates on the original entry register for consideration. That is the proposed language to clarify appointing authority. Are there any other suggestions with that phrase? Comments? Okay, well, let's take a straw poll on that. All those who want to include this language, raise your hand. All those who do not want to include the language, raise your hand. All right, that's seven zero. Well, you have some easy ones there, Elizabeth, some harder ones. Okay, um. With that, I Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, did we cover everything that you needed?
I believe you did, and what I'll do is I'll I'll take that and tomorrow. I will create a revised ordinance and get it in the packet on Thursday morning.
Okay, Grace?
Uh, thank you so much for the diligent notes and updates to staff and Elizabeth there. Um, I really liked the one that we had the last COW meeting where it has the track changes included. Um, so I didn't know if that would be possible to conclude on the next one to be able to see what was changed word for word.
I I'm gonna do my best. I have about two hours to do this tomorrow between meetings, so I'll do my best.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Fortunately, the computer will track the changes for you, right?
All right, so the next item is council input and communications. Would anybody like to give council input and communications right now? Would anybody like to give council input and communications right now? Jaya?
So I just wanted to speak to the frustration around process and also about council priorities and opportunities for council to push forward agenda items that we've identified as priorities. I'd like to bring up again the fact that the city council has not yet had one public meeting where we've been able to discuss our priorities. I know there are issues that are being brought to us regularly that need to be addressed, including the increase in gun violence, we're hearing from residents about more in-depth conversations about public safety, more broadly speaking. We made that effort to allocate funding for an evaluation, and I've seen nothing happen with that. I'd like an update on what's happening. I'm more than willing to do extra work to make that happen, whether that's helping draft a call for proposals or other opportunities. But I will be perfectly honest, today's meeting is an example of feeling really fettered by the structures that are in place and the way information is provided to us. I think the fact that it was just mentioned in passing that a co-responder model is happening, even council has not seen any information about this, even though we specified in the budget that we approved this year that no resources, monetary or otherwise, related to this or any other part of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, shall be applied to alternate response methods, including co-responder models, without a public hearing and consultation with the council. That did not happen. I understand that we're talking about reallocating funds, but those are still resources. The public and the council still should have had a say. And I think it's just a sign of disrespect that we are being asked to represent our wards, but we are not being given information in a timely manner, and we're often not given information, period. So I would like for us to prioritize having these conversations about what the council priorities are, what our ward residents have tasked us to do, so we make sure that we are moving those agenda items that are important to those of us who are on council are actually moving toward as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jaya. Anybody else like to provide council input? I don't see anybody. I would like to say one thing. Oh, sorry, Grace, did you want to say something?
Yes, but you can go ahead first.
Okay, I wanted to address something that we've heard from the public multiple venues, multiple times in city council meetings, which is the concern about the eviction moratorium ending. And the eviction moratorium ending is, you know, is going to potentially put a lot of households at risk for homelessness. And it came to my attention at the Regional Planning Commission meeting on, I think it was last Friday, that the county has $8.8 million to help households who have been impacted by COVID, who need to catch up on their rent. There's up to $20,000 per household that they can qualify for to help ensure that they are not homeless. And so I think that one of, the person who runs that at RPC will be coming hopefully in the next couple of weeks to give a presentation on what that looks like, what that process looks like. They have appointments that they take every day. They said that they have people, they have slots open every single day to help people fill out the application so that they can qualify for that rental assistance. So I don't know how public that is, but I think that's really great news for our community that there are so many, so much funds. I mean, we've been, we've been looking at hundreds of thousands, not millions. This is $8.8 million for our community. So that's what I'd like to share. All right, I think before Diane, I think Grace, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to second some of Jaya's comments about the frustration of the process and enforce some movement on some other actions that have been already taken or budgeted. I, myself, am not here to rubber stamp things. I'm very much aware that my role is to serve and represent the people of my ward and people of Urbana, and that according to our power structure, the people of Urbana are at the top of the power structure and who is ultimately supposedly has the power. So I understand the importance of a government running smoothly and efficiently, and also understand that the ultimate service and the ultimate power ideally lies with the people of Urbana, and that that's an important thing to keep in mind. So I would appreciate as much input from, directly from the public and indirectly from the public by council in decisions as early and as often as possible, because it is really frustrating when we're just stuck with a, an immediate decision that we don't have time or room for input on it. So I just wanted to second those kinds of thoughts. Thanks.
All right, Diane, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on your comments, Mary Alice. The presentation by RPC will be on October 27th to provide an overview of the housing assistance available through Regional Planning Commission.
Great. All right, any other comments? All right, with, without further agenda items, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.